Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Al Sames and Kelly McDowell. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. Just dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Third Order 3A, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation reports received July 8th, 2024. 3B, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report for year-to-date July 10th, 2024, and year-to-year comparison report for July 6th, 2023, to July 10th, 2024. 3C, 2024 cumulative licenses and permits report and June 2024 report for licenses and permits received June 15th, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I just have one. The group that came in for the last few weeks that's doing a cleanup of Washburn Street Cemetery is going to be doing another cleanup. It's going to be this Saturday, the 20th, and the cleanup is starting at 8:00 a.m. and will end at noon. If anyone would like to come out and clean up the cemetery there.
Great, thank you.
I have an announcement. The Jewish Food Festival will be taking place at Nahog Park, July 28th through July 31st, and that'll be from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I look forward to it every year. You can go down and get some good food. You can order it in advance, so you could just pick it up. You don't even have to stay for the festival, but it's really nice that that's held annually there. And also in line with that, there's going to be a Jewish art exhibition at the Everhart Museum, and tomorrow night is actually their opening night for the exhibition at 6:00 p.m. and they're having some hors d'oeuvres and things there for the opening night, but that'll be on display, I believe, until the beginning of October. That's all I have, thank you.
I have a quick one. So tomorrow starts St. Anne's 100th Solemn Novena, which is amazing. That's all I have.
Oh, thank you. Just, I just have one thing. Last night, our storms that went through. I was lucky enough to have a tree come down in the 300 block of Prospect Avenue last night, and around 11:00 p.m., our DPW showed up, cut the tree off the street, chipped it, cut it all down, actually blew the street clean, and they were gone in about 29 minutes. So I want to thank our DPW for, number one, coming out in that storm, and number two, for the great job they did cleaning that up. And I know they spent many, many more hours last night out cleaning up the rest of the city.
So I'll actually add to that. I was going to do it in fifth, but I might as well do it at this point in time. Thank the DPW, the Scranton Fire Department, and the Scranton Police Department. All three of those groups were out. I took a quick ride as the storm was coming through and after it had settled. I saw all units of Scranton Fire Department were out on the roads and doing cleanups. The Scranton Police were working some of the roads. I know Luzern and Main Avenue, they were doing traffic lights because the electricity was out, and DPW was definitely doing some cleanups there. So all of those agencies were out and appeared to have a quick response last night, so thank you.
Well, let me jump in. I was going to save it for fifth also. So I actually witnessed it myself, the rapid response of the fire department yesterday. During this horrific, quick storm, a branch came down in the power line, and they were there in minutes, removed it to make sure everybody was safe. And during that, of course, I saw DPW driving around and the police department, so I applaud them and their great efforts yesterday.
Thank you.
Fourth Order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Holdrenis.
My running counter of the collective bargaining agreements, the firefighters' contract was arbitrated 470 days ago, police 356 days ago, and now you have on your agenda tonight the clerical union contract. As you saw in the backup, it's not a typed document, it's add this, delete that paragraph, so that contract is going to have to be typed, so we'll see how long that one takes. As I read through some of the changes in there, I noted things like housing inspectors will be working on Saturdays, which I thought was a good idea. They want to drop the residency requirement, because once one union does it, which the police did, you knew that all the other unions were going to follow suit. And I saw on the backup, it said for the cost, it was left blank. But among other things, each member of that union would get $2,000 for 2024, and then they got wage increases from 2025 beyond. So how many people are in the clerical union? Anybody know?
I don't know the exact.
Okay. Every one of them will get $2,000, so that'll impact the budget this year. If you've got 50 people, that's $100,000. Okay. And then 5B, the repealing of the residency requirement. You know, when I first started coming to these meetings and saw that in the Home Rule Charter, I remember thinking, well, that's a good idea, because you remember Dave Bolzoni when he started working for Mayor Courtright? He never moved into the city, and so he was literally given a waiver for years. And then you had other people who did live in the city, like Mayor Courtright. You remember how he treated the city. A couple of police officers who were supposed to be doing patrols and were getting paid for it and weren't, and they're paying the price for it. And there was a department head who had just loved his gas card all the way to New Jersey. Remember him? So here's the thing. What I would like to see in city employees is people who know how to do their job and are people of integrity, that we don't have to watch them, we could turn our backs and they're going to do the right thing. Okay? Well, we don't need our people like our former mayor, who is paying wage tax and property tax and then taking god knows how much money with the other hand. Okay? I also saw in the backup for this residency requirement, financial impact, none. Does that mean that people who don't live in the city are going to continue to pay the wage tax? It was not specified in the backup. Is that what it means? That's something.
I have questions when we get to that piece of legislation.
Yeah. And have you scheduled your executive session with the administration to start asking these questions, because you only have two weeks before you go on recess. So you're going to have an executive session on this matter?
I would like all council members to be here for that, Joan. Unfortunately, we couldn't today.
Yeah, my bottom line is, I would rather have a Dave Bolzoni who lives outside the city and did more than anybody else to get us out of our financial troubles than to have a Mayor Courtright living in the city and ripping us off. 5V, the appointment of Melinda Krokus to the Environmental Advisory Board. I didn't see any resume on her. And with last night's storm, were there any flooding incidents where homes were flooded? Do we have any, you know, issues? Because you know, Stormwater is the big, is the big mountain we're trying to climb these days. Were there any major flooding incidents?
Not that I didn't hear of any basements that needed to be pumped out, mostly on all surface.
Okay. And I too was impressed the way the DPW, the police and the fire, just nailed whatever they could. You know, the power went out on the Electric City Garage and the Art House movie theater until 2:00 a.m. So there, it's the first time I ever saw a power outage in downtown Scranton.
Thank you, Joan. Les Spindler?
Name of Council, Les Spindler, City Resident and homeowner. I wish Mr. King was here. I hope he could hear me, because I have an issue with something he said last week. Last week, he said, was talking about the pools, and he says they're a work in progress. Well, I disagree. They're a work in regress. Progress means moving forward. We're not moving forward with the pools. These issues should have been addressed years ago. It's an example of total mismanagement by this administration. Now I saw on Sunday's paper, the Capous Avenue pool is being replaced with a splash pad. What is this city's infatuation with splash pads? Little children, they're okay on splash pads. Teenagers and up, they're not going to go to splash pads. It's ridiculous. Like I said, replacing pools with splash pads, splash pads is not progress. Pretty soon, they're going to be taking down the Electric City sign and putting a new one up, saying Scranton, the Splash Pad City. Moving on, the whole Andorcy Street was filled. I don't know how long it's going to last, but as I said in the past, the whole thing wasn't done properly, because even where it was filled, that whole area around it, you could see it settled. There's a dip in the pavement there. It's not even with the rest of the street. So I don't know what's going to happen, but it wasn't done well originally, and it's going to keep settling and settling until, it has to be dug up again and refilled in Lastly, I talked about this quite a while ago. Walking around my neighborhood, walking the dog, when the blue recycle cans are out with the commingled stuff, it's unbelievable, the stuff I see in there. I said in the past, people have to be educated on what's recyclable or what isn't. I see lids in there from the spray bottles, the sprayers are in there. The one person, they put out just these big bottles with sprayers on them, they just spray weeds, kill weeds. I saw one of those, somebody put one of those in a recycle container. When the cards are sent out every year with the dates, it says what's recyclable, but they should send something separately out, what's not recyclable. Like lids, bottle caps, sprayers, stuff like that, that's not recyclable. And as I see so much of that, and it wastes time at the recycle center, and if that stuff gets through, it breaks the machines. I was here a couple of years ago when the recycling coordinator was here, and I remember everything she said. That's, they waste their time, and like I said, if some of that stuff gets through, it breaks the machines. So the, I know I do it correctly, but I'm in the minority, I know that, walking around my area. And I'm sure if it's my, it's not just my area, I bet it's probably the whole city, and that wastes a lot of time. So I hope, like I said, I think my idea is good, sending a notice, what's not recyclable, law with what's recyclable, because the people have to be educated, because obviously, a lot of them don't know what they're doing. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ryan Omen?
I believe President Biden's response to the assassination attempt was very appropriate. Now I see the phony, baloney, apologetic statements of concern from a bunch of hypocrites as Mayor Page, who disgraced all Scrantonians in the past with her inappropriate behavior during President Trump's last visit here. Then we have years of people like Sandra Myers writing letters to the paper with nothing but hate-filled rhetoric. Anti-Trump, anti-Republican, nonstop. Then the repetitive bunch of fools that support her, they write a bunch of letters. I don't know when it's going to stop, but that's what, that's what incites, that's what causes people to beat each other's throat. That's all Sandra Myers and those fools have done to this city, year after year after year, since Mr. Trump got into office. This is the kind of respancy that you get from people like this. Well, to change the climate. Has anybody wondered why the utilities are always drilling holes in all our streets? I was walking Chumley last week, and I asked, they got holes all over North Bay. They're looking for old sewer pipes, water pipes, there's not any records. I didn't know that. Can you imagine a city this size, there's no records of these antique pipes? Did you know this? It's a shame. That's a, I don't know what could have happened to them, but I guess they're just so old. And lastly, this pathetic excuse for a school board with this outrageous hiring, outrageous salaries for two people to assist a superintendent. This is senseless. This whole city, every time you turn around, we have to have a consultant or an assistant for somebody. Again, if they can't do their job, fire them and get somebody out there that can do the job. Mr. Keating, I wrote it down, why we have these two people. Mr. Keating says these two outrageously financed newcomers here to the assistant, they are needed to create people. It says here, to create a hierarchy of duties and responsibilities. In other words, there's not there. Now, they're going to create the reason for their positions. When is this going to stop, for God's sake? You drive around this city, and there's empty houses, empty lots. Like I said, my block, my one block, there's an empty lot. They're rebuilding a house across the street little by little, and three houses at the end of the street are vacant, just one block. You know, that's why I always say that the sour stench of graft and corruption is allowed here. This place is going to pot. There's no, there's just no leadership in this city anymore, or the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's all for the side sheet. Anyone else wish to address council?
I just have a couple of things to say. First about, I was wondering if on the 400 block, I don't know if you have anything to do with this or not, but I know it's the parking thing in the city, but on the 400 block of Colfax, the hospital has purchased all the houses on the even side of the street, and the rest of us on the odd side are very happy with our permit parking signs, and we are paying for our permit parking, and we want to keep it. This is why I was hesitant to bring this up. There's two signs on the opposite side of the street, and I know that there's no houses over there, so there's no residents over there, and the hospital uses it for parking, and that's just fine. But because there's two signs still there, one right by the school in the beginning and one all the way up at the corner of Vine and Colfax on that even side, that says resident permit parking, I was hoping somebody could kind of take some down, because what happens is, when I see somebody parking in front of my house and I tell them they can't stay there because of the permit parking, they say, oh, we were told to just ignore the signs because it's all hospitals. And I think if the other side of the street didn't have those two signs, it would be a lot easier for people to decipher that they can't ignore all the signs. So I'd like to see them removed, and actually, when they do remove them, I'd like to see, on the other side of the street, they have a thing that goes underneath the permit parking. I noticed it's only on the telephone pole ones. It says residence parking, and we don't have any of that by me. And if you could put it on the telephone pole in front of the house next door to me, 405, that would be great, because instead of just saying permit parking, and they think maybe it has something to do with the hospital, it would say residence there, which it doesn't say. I'd appreciate it if they can do that. The other thing on my block, and I know you guys did contact code enforcement, because last week when I was walking up to the park with my dogs, the code enforcement car was coming around the park, and he saw me and he stopped, and he came out and he introduced himself to me, and I said, well, how do you know me? And he said, oh, I know who you are. So he asked me at that time if there was anything else on 421 Colfax there that needed attention, and I said, well, just as far as I know, aside from the grass and stuff, just the sidewalk, because it's dangerous. And he said, okay. And that was the end of it, and I've never seen anybody else up there. I'm assuming, I was assuming then that he didn't have people coming and that he was just checking it out. So I would appreciate if you could find out if code enforcement is going to do anything about it, and if they are, like if we have any kind of timeframe. Today, when I was walking Olive Street and Colfax Avenue, again, I'll remind you about the curb cut. I know that's some kind of a problem. It's the only one that's not cut. They did cut the one on Gibson Street, East Gibson Street in Colfax. I was assuming they did that one because they were paving anyway, and maybe that's why they were able to do it. But the water that everybody said was checked on, you know, the water there where it comes up out of the sewer, doesn't go down, it was still flooded there today, and everything else was dried up already, so. Okay, that's it. That's all I had to say, and when I pass out to everybody, we're concert schedules for the Jimmy Connors 2024 summer concert series at Nahog Park. You could share them, and I'm leaving a pile downstairs on the table for people in and out of City Hall. Good night, thank you.
Thanks, Doris. I don't know what we can do with the parking, if we could take half the signs down or not, but I will, I will refer this to our attorney, Albright, to look into the ordinance and see if we can actually only do one side of the street. I'm not sure if we can. I'll ask him to look into it for us.
I think we might as well say that we have to take it off this whole block, but this is so ridiculous.
That's why I'll have our attorney look into it. Thank you.
Greetings, Council, Tom Coyne, Manuka, and citizens. First of all, Paul, I would like to ask if you have an update on the employee files being left out, the investigation? If we have any idea when the results and recommendation or a new policy may be put into place? Second, it was noted by Mr. King that the pools were in bad repair and needed to be replaced. Not all at once, all of a sudden we're down to one. We will not have Nahog Pool until 2026. The American Rescue Act plan of 2021 was put into place, surprisingly, in 2021. By April 1st of 2022, there was a final ruling allowing for the use of the funds for the pool. I brought it here, presented the rulings and backups, pointed out, but Ciprani said no, I believe because they wanted to use the funds elsewhere. She said we need to look for a final, final ruling, and that was a two-year delay. If we had acted when it was brought forth, we would not be waiting for a pool for 2026. We would have had it completed this year. Third, two years ago, I received a rental registration note from the city. Seems somehow a family home that was always owned, never rented, mysteriously became a rental. Mr. Schuster and Mr. McAndrew also received these mailings. There was much discourse in the body, and even a request on why they were sent out and the mailing costs. This repeated again the following year somehow, and President Smurl instructed the people who got them in error to contact City Hall, and it would be corrected. This is not an easy task, as we know, 3-1-1 does not return most calls. Then we have Mr. Spindler, who talked about the repeated fights with the rental registration fee, that he was being levied because his daughter lived in one side of the house. It took him considerable time and effort to get that resolved. During that time, it seems others did not pay or never received a bill. On your financial statement, you list rentals under Smurl LLC, and you were an employee with 51% interest. I understand listing yourself as an employee in an LLC that you own and are the majority owner stakeholder, as it has tax advantages, as you can shift insurance and adjust your pay for best tax benefits. Who pays for what is always shiftable. What confuses me is you have always listed your rentals on the financial form, but the payment was never sent in under the rental registration. It seems one of two scenarios happened. You became a member of a city council, and the rental fees stopped in one scenario. You were pulled from the list of those getting it and not billed, or you decided you shouldn't have to pay for it. A request was put in by a right-to-know on April 24th, 2024, and on the same day, it seems, a new bill and back bill for the prior years was generated and sent out certified mails for back years owing, the years of 2023 and 2024. In a note on that notice, it said, Mr. Smurl's, the note says, "The property is considered an unlawful dwelling." Being the majority owner and more so a councilman, how do you remember to report rentals on the financial disclosure but forget to pay the rental registration fee? but forget to pay the rental registration fee? You can say you did not know the rental registration was fee with, was due with two years of people in front of this body. You can try to shift it and say, it was my partner who also took the car to the car detailing place. He was responsible. But with your job title and being majority owner, the buck stops here. You can say you never got the bill, and that this is an issue. And that this issue on why you were dropped, it's odd that it only took place once you got in office. Every new employee has a check on what they owe the city. Can you explain why you were exempt or negligent for something you enforced for everyone else? And if you were indeed removed from it, why? And who did the removing, and under what authority?
Do you want that all now? I'll make copies for you. Because you're way out of line. You have no idea what you're, what you're talking about. I have everything from the city that they did not send any of the things out. But mine are all paid and up to date, so.
There's your document. There's your documents. These documents show that he was not up to date, not paid, looking for fault. And everything you just said there was wrong.
Well, you're incorrect.
Well, as a city's law, when you need to find out who's lying, maybe you look back.
Well, let's not go about who's lying, and let's not talk about people's pasts. And so is yours. Anyone else?
You know what I'm saying? Peace would be a little bit nice, like just, just calm down. I think you guys should get some security monitors downstairs because everything that's going on with Donald Trump being an assassination attempt on his life and things like that, it's obvious that people get upset with you guys very on occasion. You know what I'm saying? So I think that we should up the security in this building. And we should have, we should have more than one, one police officer back there. We should have one right there and one right there.
Anthony, speak this way, please.
In case, in case someone comes in here. And because people are crazy, especially in the city of Scranton. So if somebody comes up here and they take it upon themselves, people should not be able to get that close to you guys without permission. That's all I'm saying. And forget my tone, but I'm serious about this. Because this should not be happening. We should have respect for our leaders, regardless of what mistakes they make. You understand? We don't attack them.
Anthony, please.
Become solutions.
Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Resident taxpayer, taxes paid. I'm a little concerned about 6G, and I'm willing to spend a small amount of time. Why the changes in what it always says is surface transportation project? Is that road repair, or is it? Anybody know? I'm sorry if things get. Oh, I'm concerned about 6G on 7th order. Seven, is it 7G?
I think you're talking about 7F. So it's a reallocation of.
Yeah, reallocation of funds. Is it road repairs, or what is it?
It's crosswalks in the city.
What's that?
Crosswalks in the city.
Crosswalks?
Painting.
Uh huh. Okay, well. Hopefully, it has a good purpose in mind. A lot of our streets, our sidewalks are broken up. I can only imagine with what they did with my sidewalks in front of my house, taking parts and throwing them on a truck and driving them off. The curbs and stuff, we're getting erosion. And there's piles of dirt and rocks in every, on almost every corner on Crown Avenue. Okay, a lot of stuff has happened this week. And, you know, it's just mind-boggling. I wish both parties would reform themselves. And we have the undemocratic part of the Democrat Party. And then we have the 2025 project with the Heritage Foundation, which just about totally nullifies the Constitution. We have a bunch of evangelicals pushing this. It's time they stop being tax-free. If they want to get up to their eyeballs in politics, then, you know, everybody else has to pay taxes. If I want to donate to a political party, I have to, or a political representative, I have to come up with more money than a 20. I have to donate $25, pay $5 in taxes. And it's getting to the point where it's, it's not only undemocratic, it's fascist. I don't need the opinions of Sister Bertha better than you reflecting on my life. And, you know, when you get so many people on the outs and possibly in prison. You know, it gets in Pennsylvania, for instance. They haven't really raised the budget for food in prisons in over 10 years. A recent article stated that that is now, instead of $10 or $10 and some cents a day, it's $5 and some cents a day. Inmates are being served spoiled food or inadequate food. I met a person that was quite a few, a few years ago. He was sent, sent up to the recycling center. And he lost 20 pounds in 40 days. You know, so this is really getting to the, sorry about the assassination attempt. But that was a Republican. The guy was registered as a Republican. So my message to the Proud Boys and the Oath Keepers is beat each other up for a change. Stop beating everybody else up. You know, it's entirely ridiculous. They want to outlaw divorce. I mean, come on. This is, that Heritage Foundation. And I think they are tax-exempt. You know, come on. Tax-exempt for that? Excuse me. Have a good night. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, counsel, Mike Mancini, Scranton. Arrogance is met with arrogance. First time I actually introduced myself to the mayor was right here during the unhoused commission. They didn't even say a pledge of allegiance. They just went around the room talking about what they do. Now, they already know what they do, and they had no plan in sight. All right? When you don't know the city, and you know, you don't know its history, you don't find yourself putting yourself and finding a way to put yourself in a car seat to go to the Ritz Theater for its opening. You also try to dim the lights when we're the electric city. This administration reminds me of an expansion football team. No, no wins in sight, no vision, no destination. Now, I've asked several questions of this counsel. And it's gone on deaf ears, time and time again. So I'm going to ask these questions one more time. If I don't get an answer from you, and respect is earned. Next week, I'm going to liken this counsel to a Turner Classic, The Wizard of Oz. Okay? First question's a simple one. Don Margenta is currently a police officer down in South Carolina, down in Myrtle Beach. In a short period of time, he's already considered a hero. He's a third-generation police officer who could not pass this rigged test with the Scranton Police Department. With all the money that we put into recruiting, we had 130, and we're now down to 10. Five or six will shake out. I want to know how important it is to you to find the right officers for the right reasons. The state police test is something that's been used and utilized for them for decades without any problems. But yet, we use something else. So I want to ask you how important it is to have a fully-staffed police department with our current climate. I also want to have you bring in Chief Carroll and ask him why. Only five or six pass this test. All right? How do you feel about the city being down to one pool when Nahog opened in September of 2026? How important are crosswalks, your schools? Residency requirement. This residency requirement goes back to 1979 in a mandate. And after that, back in the early 1990s, a court order. For a reason. We don't need to be an expansion team. We're the city of Scranton. We could do better, and we will do better. Prior city councils fired off letters for several different reasons. I'm not here for myself. I'm here also for the sins of the city of Scranton, who are sick of swerve patterns, getting out of the way of manhole covers and potholes that are not our problem. Their ordinance is in place. I want one of you to direct either Solicitor Gilbride, who's one of the best attorneys in Lackawanna County, or Mr. Waldenberg. Make them famous. Put them on the list of Waldenberg. All right? Curfew. Look at Wilkes-Barre's ordinance. All right? They have something in place. It works. All right? We have two magistrates that I've talked to that agree. Why don't we order the underage to community service? Community service is already set up through Lackawanna County. You're worried about getting sued? Come on now. You know, we could order them to work on the Washburn Street Cemetery. We're going to be there this Saturday at 8:00 a.m. The sewer agreement, 1.9% per year. I asked each one of you to take a look at the sales agreement. The increase is 6.4%. Each one of you spoke to people about this increase, but you're unwilling to address it. 88% of the store drains are owned by PA American Water. Have them clean them out. And like I said, I'm done being ignored. There's a lot of good people that come out here. Not enough of them. But there's good people that come out here that work hard and want their questions addressed. Don't do things in spite of this mayor. Do things because of her. Thank you. Good evening, city council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
No, I'm going to save my, my comments for fifth order items.
Thank you. Dr. Rothchild, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
I have a few. First, I also wanted to make sure to thank our DPW and our emergency services, SPD, SFD, for their responses with the recent storms that we've had in our area. I'm hoping no one had gotten flooded out. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to be, or we haven't heard of those experiencing flooding. But they were there for, you know, any trees that came down and to help out our residents. So we, we truly appreciate their, their quick responses for the storms. And I mentioned this during caucus, but I just wanted to briefly mention it here, too. I have, I take issue with a couple of things with the website, but one of them being with the city council page. I find it difficult to navigate for residents to be able to access the city council agenda, agendas for, for future meetings and the minutes for past meetings. The button for that is located at like the bottom of the page. And I feel like it should be higher up. And even when you get to it, the agenda for the upcoming meeting is separate, and it's above. And it's just easy to miss in the layout. So I just want to work together with IT to see if we can clean that up a bit. So people who aren't used to navigating it or first-time visitors to that page can find what they need to. I also wanted to bring up that there is some graffiti along the Harrison Street Bridge. And it's on the, the south side of the bridge. And that would be PennDOT's responsibility. So I've instructed Mr. Waldenberg to contact PennDOT regarding that.
I will, Dr. Roth.
Okay, thank you. It's a, it's a nice bridge that they just built a few years ago. So we don't want that, that graffiti to stay on there. And that's across the street from the park. And everything is, is kept up pretty nicely along there. So I just want to make sure that graffiti gets removed. And there's a street that I've talked about a lot in the past in the Hill section, the 400 block of Prescott Avenue, which I've often received complaints about and just never seems to be taken care of. And there are several problem properties along that, that block of Prescott. One of them is the property, I think, maybe 429, that previously had the fire. And nothing was ever done with that. They were going to renovate the property, didn't renovate it. Then I was told it was going to be demolished. Still, nothing has happened with it. The old Prescott Bingo Hall that someone, I think, bought that and is renovating it. So hopefully, that will be nicer. I know that was used for apartments. I think it's going to continue to be used for apartments. But if they make that nice and the rest of the block is, you know, falling apart, or other people aren't caring about their properties, how much of a difference does it, does it make? So on the corner there is the old Fine Street Station. And that's constantly having overgrown shrubbery and everything around there and litter. And it's just not cleanly. But then across the street from that, there's an empty vacant lot that has been overgrown for a long time. It also has City of Scranton barriers along it. And I'm not sure where those came from. I noticed those some time ago. And I did want some more information on why we have placed those there and what's being done about, about that property. And I think that about covers it. So I'll go from there.
I'll have code enforcement follow up, Dr. Roth.
While, while we're on the topic of graffiti, I was also informed that the Washburn Street Bridge also has graffiti on it. While you're sending out that other request, if we could add, add that to that as well?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Good, Justin, thank you. Mr. McCandry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, a couple. So at the, the last block on Watson Street in West Scranton is a dead end. And it's been a dead end since I'm a kid. But there seems to be issues there now. And it's also referred to, I don't know, I don't know why, but it's referred to the 14th and 15th hundred block. But it's really one block, one side. So, but what I'm hearing from the residents down there is, you know, not a lot of people familiar that it's a dead end and that there's issues happening with trucks, some big, coming down, not knowing that. And, you know, they're trying to get out of there and, and causing accidents or hit-and-runs. They're hitting some, you know, they're, they're running into some vehicles that are parked, so. And there's a lot of kids down there. It's a neighborhood now where there's young kids. So if, could we please reach out to, I don't know if it has to have a traffic study, but could we reach out to the proper departments and ask for like a slow children sign on that block? that block? And of course, a dead end sign on that block or right before it. I don't know if it needs a stop sign. Maybe we'll throw that in there, too, when they're taking a look at it.
I will, sir.
Thank you. So, speaking about streets, so, I don't know, I've been bringing this up for a while. An ordinance was passed almost two years ago for angled parking on St. Anne Street. One block was done. It was painted. The 13th and 14th have yet to be painted, and it's almost two years. I know I mentioned it recently. Did we hear anything?
Not as of today. The follow-up was sent, but no answer as of today.
When we pass ordinances, we got to complete the work or fulfill the ordinance. So also was brought to my attention that the Catch Basin on River Street is filled, and the entire area around it needs cleaning because of high grass. And, you know, also, the Catch Basin can't function, you know, when it's filled like that, and it's causing some problems up there. And it's also, you know, I was also instructed or told that, you know, this is the main entrance or one of them to the city, and it's very unsightly. I have a picture that I got. I'll send it to you tomorrow, just if you remind me. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. I have a few things. The first one is about the hub test and its process to date. This is what I've received. The city contractor, Rudolph Clark LLC, is waiting for the Lackawanna County Assessor's Office to supply some supporting information to Rudolph Clark LLC needs to move forward. So it's difficult to give a date at this time until the city actually receives this information from the assessor's office. It says we may have a better idea when the information may be forwarded to Rudolph Clark LLC from the assessor's office in the next few weeks. They expect to have that. The next thing is, we have a question on the main avenue where they replaced the water main, and when is it going to be done? Well, it looks like it's not going to be completely finished until 2025. Steve Oselinski is the senior superintendent with the PAWC, State of the Water Company Engineering, met with the city Thursday, July 11, and discussed plans for restoration. Half of the project will be based in a few weeks, and the second half will be based in early fall. So the overlay of the actual street is not scheduled until 2025, due to the city also going on Main Avenue and replacing storm drains. And then, once that is complete, the gas company is going to be on Main Avenue doing gas lines. So they are not going to overlay the entire street until 2025, when all three of these projects have been completed. The West Scranton Falcons football field, we sent that again to Parks and Rec to find out about the damaged stairs and if we're going to repair them or what's going to happen there. 402 Davis Street, the property was condemned by code enforcement, and we have asked it to be replaced on the demolition list. 500 Davis Street, complaints of speeding traffic and including lines they want to have done, and so the police was sent to the supervisor, and we asked if we can contact this resident regarding increased patrols down there and the placement of a digital speed sign. Also, the registered wanted speed bumps there. Now, naturally, we can't have speed bumps in the City of Scranton or on state roads, so we will not be able to put speed bumps out. And finally, this will be for, this petty thing, will be for Attorney Gilbride. I have all of the information that I've gone over with you from months ago about the problem I had paying my rental registration from the properties, all of the responses and when they were given to me from last year with the hundreds of other people that had problems paying their bills, actually only rental registration bills. So I will give you this, and if you would look it over and provide all of my council members, colleagues with copies of it. And if we need to announce this publicly, I will also do that, but we will take care of that with your opinion on how to handle it. That is all I have.
5B for introduction and ordinance, repealing the residency requirement for city employees.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. So when looking at this ordinance, there's two things. I think it may have been conflated. Something I wanted to point out to all, and it's something that maybe the fire department doesn't know. In the backup of this legislation, it states that the fire department has sent a letter to the administration to repeal residency. However, it continues to state in that backup document that negotiations are ongoing with the fire department. It goes on to state that residency is a subject for collective bargaining and that all other collective bargaining agreements that contain residency shall still be subject to negotiations. So when looking at this, it appears to me that this is only administrative staff when it comes to this legislation. So my first question is, is the city administration currently negotiating a fire contract? It would seem odd to me that they were. We got a response on May 20 from Upbergen Associates that the last copy of that contract was not completed and not mutually signed off upon, so it would be odd that we didn't get the final version before the new contract is being negotiated. As I said before, the wording appears to be referring only to those administrative positions and not the bargaining units. I'd also like to ask, where did this piece of legislation begin? Did it originate with the law department and come down to council, or was it something that was sent through the fire department because it appears that it's coming through the law department? My opinion is this piece of legislation shouldn't even be on council's desk at this point in time. One thing I want to point out to anybody in the audience, anybody at home, anybody that's listening, the city lost the residency piece when they were negotiating the police contract. It was something, I got a few calls over the last few days, and it was something that people didn't seem to know had occurred. So with the arbitration, that police contract that was lost, and now with the negotiation of the clerical contract that was approved last week, it was also negotiated out of their contract. So I would think at this point in time, any future negotiations would side with that last police arbitration, if not with that negotiation of the clerical union contract. Would that be right or correct, Mr. Gilbride?
Can you ask the question again?
When it comes to residency, any future negotiations would refer back or side with the police arbitration when it comes to residency?
That's absolutely correct.
Yeah. So at this point in time, I don't see why this would be in front of council.
Okay, so on the question, this never should have been sent down to us. I don't like it, and I'm going to tell you why I don't like it. And, you know, in my mind, I support the public safety unions more than anybody, and all the unions and the hard workers of the City of Scranton. They do great work, and I'm very proud of them. But this piece of legislation leads you to believe, oh, if we don't vote for this, we're not voting for the unions. If we vote, no. The way I look at it is, and I took a deeper look at it, that the only one that benefits from a yes vote tonight is administration hires. Because at the bottom, the note states, whether you pass this or not, the repeal of the residency mandate has to be negotiated in the future CBAs. So, you know, of course, it looks like we're, you know, voting yes tonight, and it's good for everybody. No. The only immediate benefit, the only people that immediately benefit from this is the administrative hires. They get waivers anyways, most of the time, when it's sent down. So, you know, I'd like to see the process follow. I believe that the fire department, they have to wait, they have to wait till the negotiations anyways to get this, and I believe they're going to get it. Okay? Only because the police did. And do I prefer to have a police officer live in the city and park his car in front of his house? I think that's great. But arbitration awarded them the right that they don't have to follow the waiver. And I was fine with that because that's binding, and I was okay with that. So DPW will file the same suit. Because it was already awarded means they will get it in contract negotiations, not say that, oh, if we don't approve this tonight, administration's going to sue, or the employees that have to, you know, live in the city that work in administration. Like I said, this never should have came our way. This should have worked its way out. And of course, I have great devotion for the unions and public safety, and it's like me voting no for this is not a vote against them, because this process is going to happen anyways, folks. But it only immediately happens for administration. We already get the waivers anyways. So this was a tough one for me, but I always explain my vote, and that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick.
On the motion?
No.
On the question?
Excuse me, on the question. I believe that since the arbitrator decided in favor of the Scranton Police Department, we have just seen now that the clerical union has fallen in line through their negotiation process as well. I believe that once we start offering this to multiple unions in the city, that we are opening ourselves up to potential litigation. That's what's called disparate treatment. And as a result, I think that this is probably the wise move at this time because you're leaving the fire department out. They're kind of singled out, and actually, probably as well as DPW, because those contracts will be coming up ultimately. But what we're basically saying is, everybody else, to everybody else, you don't have to live in the city. But you, the fire department, and you, DPW, you have to, and you have to wait until your contract's negotiated. I'll guarantee that an arbitrator would indicate, or a lawyer or a judge would indicate that this is disparate treatment against those two groups, and therefore, that's why I will be voting for this, in favor of this this evening.
So just another one on the question, back to that wording that was used. In that backup document, it does state the waiver of the residency, but it does state that anyone who has a collective bargaining agreement will still be subject of negotiation. So it doesn't appear that that would be the case at this point in time. Also, when looking at, I do feel like more discussion is needed. If we're looking at those entrance tests, if we're looking at promotional exams, things like that, I do think we should take a look at a way to invest in employees that remain in the city. Those employees that are going to buy a home in the city, those employees that are going to remain in the city, is there a way that we could reward those who are invested in the City of Scranton? And I think that needs to be further discussion.
In addition, if I can add, you know, financial impact, none. Are you kidding me? The potential of lost revenue, I mean, I know a lot of the police officers didn't move out of the city, but the potential's there. So there's no plan for that. Anybody think of that? No. Was that brought up? No. How about the resident who always wanted to be a police officer or a firefighter, which is admirable, wants to stay in the city and apply and go through the system, or any other employee that wants and loves their city, wants to live here and work here? Do they get some type of preference during the hiring process? A point or two, like it's done in school districts, like it's done everywhere else, where when they apply, they should, you know, because of their love of their city and they want to stay and work here and, you know, encounter the higher taxes, they should get some type of scoring during the hiring process that would help them, you know, fulfill that dream? So I don't see any of that addressed in here, anything answered in here, and I don't get the financial impact, none. We lose taxpayers, folks. So, you know, of course, this was shoved down real quick, right before we go on recess as usual. And, you know, there's multiple reasons why I don't like it. And right now, yes, a judge is going to say, well, it was done in arbitration and that the fire department deserves it. Sure, they do, but it states here and under notes, other notes, no matter what we do tonight, folks, they have to wait. The only ones that don't have to wait will be the administrative hires. And how many openings do we have? They'll be flying in through our recess.
I'm going to add my on-the-question. So I'll be voting in favor of this. I've stated for several years now here on council that I believe it is antiquated, that we even have a residency requirement, as Mr. Mancini pointed out, since 1979, so that's 45 years ago. Things have certainly changed in our city since then, and many other cities do not, most other cities do not have a residency requirement. I think it's insane that we still do have one, and so I've always been in favor of repealing that for our city so that anyone is able to work in our city. I think as Ms. Hodawanit's pointed out, just because someone doesn't live in the city does not mean that they are not going to do a great job in their position as a city employee and that they're still not going to be devoted to their position. I think that's a complete falsehood, that just because you live in the city, you're going to care more about your job for the city. So I welcome anyone to work here. And I also believe that many of the open positions we've had, we've had trouble filling with people who live in the city, and many of the applicants we've received had been from outside of the city, is what I've heard on many of the positions that we've had open in the past. So yes, it will make it easier to fill those positions, and if we don't have people who live in the city who are chomping at the bit to get to those jobs, and someone else from outside of the city is willing to take them on, then I'm fine with that. I'm also not sure where the confusion is with the other contracts with SFD. I mean, if that's going to happen either way, why not just complete this now and make it fair for all the employees, even the administrative ones, and have everyone on the same playing field? I mean, the contracts, I think that's in there because our legislation is not going to supersede the CBA, so they're going to have to change those anyway to include the residence, well, to remove the residency requirement. That was my understanding as to why that was included. And we could certainly ask for more clarification on that, and I'd like to hear more from the administration about it, but I'm in favor, and I have, I take no issue with removing the residency requirement.
So as stated before, the residency requirement will be removed across all of these bargaining units as their contracts come up. The backup here states that negotiations will occur anyway. So negotiations will be occurring anyway. If we do this tonight, if we even forgo our rules and do it tonight, it's not going to start tonight because anyone that has a CBA will still need to negotiate, as per the backup document. I think a bigger discussion should occur as to whether we're going to reward our employees and reward our union employees that want to invest in our city. And I think that's a better, either we have a more thorough discussion, or a better place for this to occur is at negotiations where both sides have legal counsel. That's my opinion here tonight. I would like to see this not introduced so more discussion can occur.
Thank you, everyone. Naturally, there is going to be a lot of questions about everything on this. This is only for introduction so that we can begin the process of naturally asking all of the questions. We actually have to have an executive meeting for this, so I will be in favor of introducing it and so that we can start and ask all of the questions out of there. There are a lot of things that aren't clear, but that's how everything starts here. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, removing the license and inspection requirements for commercial scales and gasoline service stations.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. Two things that I have. So at this point in time, according to the clerical union CBA that was passed last week by the union, they're going to be removing the weights and measures position. That's going to be now switching to a housing inspector. This is a revenue generating position, and it stated that, the city administration stated that the state is going to take over this duty. So, Mr. Waldenberg, can we ask, did the city administration get absolute confirmation that the state will take over this duty? And then, it was stated in the backup documents that we are the only municipality in the state that completes our own weights and measures on our own. So can we find out, are we, in fact, the only municipality in the state that completes the weights and measures function as stated in the backup document? the weights and measures function as stated in the backup document?
I'll get clarification on both questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I voiced, I'm sorry, I voiced the same concerns in caucus that, okay, so if, is the responsibility normally of the Commonwealth to do this? And we've been doing it just for whatever reason for all these years and no one else does? Has the state been notified that, hey, we're not doing it anymore? You guys better start doing it. So I need to know that, you know, if they're prepared to do the work now for us, that conversation took place.
On the question. On the question, the backup documentation indicates that we presently have an MOU with PVA. And it's my understanding that if, under a memorandum of understanding, if one side decides to no longer, you know, when the MOU is up, each side has an opportunity to, you know, decide not to partake in the MOU any longer. So I'd like to pass this this evening and get clarification from the administration as to number one, when is the end date of the MOU? And number two, have we in fact notified PVA that we are no longer interested in maintaining this MOU with them? And we're going to toss it back to PVA.
All right. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance, establishing responsible contractor standards, certifications, and related provisions for large public works contracts.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction and ordinance, amending procedural provisions of chapter 428 taxation regarding the tax exemptions from real property tax for improvements to certain residential, commercial, and other business property to adjust application and exemption schedules.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Bernard Bernie McGirl as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for a three-year term to expire on May 31, 2027.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
You seconded, yes. On the question?
On the question, I believe it was Mr. McGirl that had like a shorter term. We weren't sure if he wanted to stay on or not, but I'm really happy to see that he is willing to continue on our environmental advisory council. That's all.
Yes, I'd like to say the same. Mr. McGirl did have a one-year, a, a one-year stint on the, the Environmental Advisory Committee, and I'm happy to see him stay. And just want to point out that this is a reappointment.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Harry McKay Jr. as a member of the Scranton Ethics Board for a three-year term to expire on November 24, 2027.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. I'd also like to point out that this is a reappointment that expires in November.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Augustine Gus Fahey as a member of the Scranton City Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2028.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. Also like to point out, this is a reappointment that expires in December.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5I for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Jay Conrad Bosley as a member of the Scranton Historical Architectural Review Board for a five-year term to expire on October 11, 2029.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. I'd also like to point out that this is a reappointment, expires in October.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Jennifer Davis as a member of the Scranton City Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2028.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. Also a reappointment that expires in December.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5K for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Jerry Weinberger as a member of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for a five-year term to expire on December 31, 2029.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
I'd also like to point out that this is a reappointment, it expires in December.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5L for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of David Faniff as a member of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for a five-year term to expire on December 31, 2029.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5L be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Also a reappointment expires in December.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5M for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Joseph Enton as a member of the Scranton City Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2028.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5M be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Also a reappointment expires in December.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5N for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Glynnis Johns as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 1, 2028.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5N be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Also a reappointment expires in October.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5O for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to $150,000 to be used towards the city of Scranton Preliminary Engineering Design Pine Brook Streetscape Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5O be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5P for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Automated Red Light Enforcement Transportation Enhancements Grant Program for up to $105,000 to be used towards bolstering safety in West Scranton.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5P be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5Q for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of John Cowder as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority for a four-year term to expire on July 30, 2028.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5Q be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. This is also an appointment, a reappointment.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5R for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Thomas McLean as a member of the Shade Tree Commission for a five-year term to expire on October 11, 2029.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5R be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5S for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Julie Schumacher Cohen as a member of the Scranton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a five-year term to expire on September 27, 2029.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5S be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. What I was getting at here tonight is there's 17 people being appointed, or I should say reappointed, to boards. Out of the 17, this is the only person that is not being reappointed. This is Mr. Terrence Gallagher. He's spent many years on this board, dedicated a lot of years to this board. I've said it before from here in the past, and I'm going to say it again. This administration has removed some of these longtime members from these positions. People that have been dedicated for years, they're replaced by someone that's new, and they last for maybe only a few short months or a year. We have two on here tonight that have already resigned after a year of service or less than a year of service. Just something I wanted to point out. I'm going to be voting no for this appointment.
On the question, so whatever happened to rewarding people that are loyal, that are devoted, that work hard? Whatever happened, rewarding people with experience, bring value, that want to stay, all right? It seems that the ones, the appointments that we get are, the past three, I remember Mr. Galella, since I'm here. I remember Mr. Granahan, who loved what they were doing, was on these boards for years, and they were replaced. And it's unfortunate, I'm, I'm, okay, they're up in age, they're my age or older. That, you know, with age comes wisdom and dedication and loyalty. I'm not saying nothing against Mrs., Mrs. Cohen. If, you know, if Mr. Gallagher didn't want to remain, I'd vote for her. But another part I don't like about this is the administration tried to replace him a year early. A year early. You know, it's crazy, we see these things coming down now for reappointments in December, but the administration tried to replace him a year ago, which is absurd. So, you know, okay, so he has 40 years on, on the Housing Authority. He's there 40 years for a reason. He got reappointed a bunch of times because he was doing a great job. So like I said, nothing against Mrs. Cohen, you know, but if, if, we got to keep the people that want to stay and, and continue to do great work, not just replace them for whatever reason, maybe because they're older, because that's what it appears to me when, when I keep saying this, and I hope that's not the case. So I'll be voting no.
On the question, I, I don't take any issue with Mr. Gallagher, and I truly appreciate the years of service that, that he has given to this board. I've served on many boards over the years, and they all had term limits on how long you could serve on it. And I believe that it's healthy for boards and commissions to have turnover and to have new members over those periods of time. I believe that new members bring new and different perspectives and backgrounds. And so, you know, I think it's a positive thing to have those changes, not necessarily a, a quick turnover where someone's not going to remain on for, for their term. But, you know, I, I think that it, that can be a positive thing, and I know Ms. Cohen is, would be very qualified and would be well-suited for this board. So I'll be voting in favor of this legislation, and once again, want to thank Mr. Gallagher for all his, all his years of service and work on this board.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
5T for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Michael Salerno as a member of the Scranton Parking Authority for a five-year term to expire on June 1, 2029.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5T be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Just pointing out, this is also another reappointment.
All those in favor?
Well, and also on the question, Mr. Salerno, I'm a class, I was a classmate with him, and you know, so he's, he's been on this for, for multiple years because he's doing great work. He's my age, but you know, it's okay. And he does great work, so I'm glad to see him reappointed, as well as other, you know, Mr. Gallagher should have been too.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5U for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Dan Clarkson to the Housing Board, Appeals Board for a term to expire November 30, 2027.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5U be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. This individual here requested to move to an alternate, so his request has been granted, and he's now moving to an alternate on this board.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5V for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Melinda Crocus as second alternate member of the Scranton Enviro- Environmental Advisory Council to fill the unexpired term of Tara Jones, beginning immediately and expiring on May 31, 2025.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5V be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. This, this person is being appointed due to a resignation on the board. I heard nothing but great things about Ms. Tara Jones. I heard she brought a lot of experience to the Environmental Advisory Council, but just pointing out, it's been a year or less that, that she's been on this board.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5W for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Daisy Corredo as a member of the Scranton Human Relations Commission to fill the unexpired five-year term to expire on October 11, 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5W be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. Just pointing out here that someone has resigned also from this board. This individual here is being appointed to that unexpired term. And then the next resolution that we are going to read is going to be her reappointment. So rather than a five-year term, tonight, we're going to be giving a six-year term to someone who we've yet to experience their work ethic.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5X for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Daisy Corredo as a member of the Scranton Human Relations Commission for a five-year term to expire on October 11, 2029.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5X be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. This is to reappoint the individual who has been appointed tonight.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5Y for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate cities of the city of Scranton to execute and enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the city of Scranton clerical workers and local lodge number 2462 affiliated with the District One of the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, AFL-CIO, in accordance with the terms and provisions of a memorandum of understanding with an effective date of January 1, 2024, and ratified by the membership.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5Y be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. I'm glad to see that the clerical union came to an agreement with the city administration. My only question is, the city pave cut inspector has now been moved to the Traffic Division. So the question here is, will we still have a pave cut inspector and they'll just be assigned to the Traffic Division, or are we eliminating that position?
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title. File to Council Number 26, 2024, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the HUD 2024 Annual Action Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Home Emergency Solutions Grant Program for the period beginning January 1st, 2024.
You have heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I moved it. Item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table item 6A.
Second.
All right, there's a motion on the, there is a motion on the floor and a second to table 6A. This ordinance is being tabled until a public hearing can be held on Tuesday, July 30th, 2024, 5:45 PM. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed to Council Number 23, 2024, amending the city's reserved parking program for persons with disabilities and severely disabled veteran and related provisions.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed to Council Number 24, 2024, authorizing a lease agreement with Street Cats and Dogs, Inc. for the use of the premises commonly known as the Ash Street Firehouse at 1409 Ash Street in Scranton.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
I just want to say quickly on the question, there was some confusion the past, after this was introduced, that, or the past two weeks. This is, this is being leased. I know it's for a dollar, and that's great, but people need to realize too, because people thought that we sold it for, you know, for whatever reasons, or, you know, they were confused, but they're also paying their utilities, and I think the public should know that. I don't, because it's not really clear or written in the legislation. That's all I wanted to say.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 62, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Multiscape, Inc. to perform Naog Pool construction.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 63, 2024, accepting a donation in the amount of $5,000 in the form of 200 gift cards valued at $25 each and for use at Garrity Supermarket as part of the Good Neighbors Program.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yeah.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 64, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with D&amp;M Construction Unlimited, Inc. for construction services of the Western Field Pool.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 65, 2024, amending Resolution Number 69 of 2022 as amended entitled. A resolution as amended entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions in the amount of $68,746,050 to reallocate funds from various budgeted ARPA accounts to allow the public sector capacity and surface transportation projects.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, last week I asked about the auditing services. $580,000 was going to be reallocated from ARPA auditing to other areas. The answer that I got was that the city has adequate funding allocated to complete the requirements for those ARPA audits, and therefore they're going to reallocate those remaining funds. So they're saying that they have enough money to do those audits. A portion of this is crosswalks, and I know that Mr. McCandrew brought up in caucus about the crosswalks, and I know he's going to touch on it now. I'll add a piece to that once he's done, and I had brought up the crosswalk on Main Avenue in West Scranton near the post office. There's been some incidents on that, in that area, and one person did die in the area due to being struck by a car. Of this funding, Mr. Volenberg, can we ask, I know the crosswalks were part of the West Scranton Ten Year Revitalization Project. Are these funds going to cover some of those crosswalks that were included in that west side revitalization, or will those be additional crosswalks?
I'll ask that question, sir.
Thank you very much.
Also on the question, so I know some of this money is going to be reallocated for transportation services, meaning crosswalks. It's sad because every year, or every couple of years, residents have to come to us and say, oh, we need the crosswalk painted. It faded. So with that said, first of all, I'd like to request the list of crosswalks that are going to be completed this year, and also if we can ask the administration if they would develop some type of schedule so every year they're looked at or maintained, because the issue is maintenance of these crosswalks. And also, I know there's always some dispute between who owns the street, the state or us, or whatever, so we need to take care of that because we're mandated by the state to provide crosswalks and safe school zones, you know, that have signs that say 15 miles an hour. I don't think we're doing that. I think, and, you know, not just, and it's not just parochial, I mean, public schools, parochial schools too. So I'd like to, if you'd send that or inquiries over to make sure, you know, or if we want to have a dialogue about it, we can come in and we can discuss it, but I think we need to do it because I don't think we're doing a good job at it, and I think we need to do it before school, which, you know, quickly approaching. And then, you know, a couple of them were already brought here, and requests were made for Woodland and North Washington, it needs signage and repainting, 2115 North Washington, you know, and the signage is supposed to contain the hours too also when this is a school zone. So I think, I think we got to get back and get up to speed with what really is our requirement by the state, okay?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
On the question, I'm also in agreement with requesting a schedule for crosswalks, and, yeah, I just agree that it's, it's terrible how we've let a lot of the crosswalks go within the city, and it really brings more visibility to some of those dangerous intersections, and hopefully can prevent people from getting in an accident or getting hit by a vehicle if we, if we have, if we're able to keep up better with our crosswalks throughout the city. So I would like to see us develop a schedule to do that, and with the focus, of course, as Councilman McCandrew mentioned, on the school areas in particular, I think those should take priority as well.
Yes, to add to that, you know, the school areas was something we discussed, definite in need of that, and one thing that he said in addition to that was that, you know, St. Clair, St. Paul's had come to us and requested some of that, and after that meeting also All Saints Academy had reached out. So just let's not forget those parochial schools as well as our, the Scranton School District.
Thank you. I also agree, and I would hope that all schools take priority. I don't know when we're going to start this project, but hopefully we can get it started, complete it before school gets back. We're only a matter of weeks away before school starts again. Roll call, please.